Epley?
Here.
Gunther?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Simmons?
Here.
Can I all stay into the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Vibe of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next week we're gonna sing the Star-Spangled Banner.
No, just practice.
Mark, are there changes to the agenda at all, or additions?
No changes, Mayor.
The minutes from June 20th were sent out by Tammy. Questions, additions, corrections, anyone? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So who?
June 20th.
Support.
Motion's support, all in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, motion carries. The mayor's state of the city is there, I'm not going to read it this year. Is that okay, Mark? Could it just be as here?
It's completely up to you and the commission how you wanna handle that, Mayor.
We all agree. Unless you have to have it. Thank you. Special order of the day, introduction, Mark?
Happy to have a few introductions. Now, we have three of them, Joey Walker, maybe Joey you could just stand, I don't think has, wants to make any comments. He's our new planning and zoning technician in the community development office. Moved here from East Lansing and we're lucky to have him, so that's exciting. Melanie Doughty is in the back corner, thanks Melanie. She worked for New England County for a number of years and again, we feel lucky that she is now our new grant coordinator. Hit the ground running. And Jake Rennie is not new to us, but he's new to his new role as wastewater superintendent and he's gonna do a great job. I just know he is, so those are all three new folks in new roles. Happy to introduce.
Now, is this the one we have to push to pass, the B or A or C or?
Yes, yeah, he's, his B license, he, I know he got.
Encourage. I would use the word encourage.
So he's gonna get that done. Welcome. How long were you with the city before?
Working on nineteen years, eighteen and a half.
Long time. Very good. Enjoy anything?
Like what?
Anything you wanna say?
Not really.
Melanie, anything you'd like to say?
Just happy to be here.
Good, thank you. Any questions for that, anyone? Good. Is that going to work, Heather?
Don't jinx me.
It's nice to look at. Heather's gonna give us an update on projects.
So the first one we're gonna talk about is the left service line replacement project. That's been awarded by the commission, Gerber Construction. They have a hundred and forty services total that they had to replace and of which right now they have eighty-seven remaining. So the plan is, is that when they get done at Marion, they'll get right back after that. We just went out to bid and opened bids today at the Dialed Ride. Originally, we tried to do siding and the bids came back way larger than what we anticipated. So we decided to work with the state and have a painting project, the bids came back today. You're gonna be brought forward a recommendation for a company that submitted a bid approximately around fifteen thousand dollars. They're not in this community, so the name is escaping me at the moment, but it looks like we should be able to get that cleaned up. And then, we're waiting on the state to give us approvals to do a parking lot improvement at Dialed Ride. Once Dean from the transportation division approves everything, we'll be able to go out to bid and hopefully get that done as well. As you all are aware, the parking lot out here got three done. Marion Pine and Spruce, they're doing great, they're ahead of schedule. They should actually be buttoning up that project in the next couple of weeks. Right now, they are just doing the road grading and then soon they'll be paving, assuming that the weather is good.
Were there any unforeseen things in that one?
No.
You were kinda worried about what that was gonna be?
Yeah, we were, but we got a couple of the service lines addressed in that project as well, so. As you all have heard, State Street's gonna be closed here starting next Tuesday. And we're working with M.D.O., they are going to be patching and repairing the concrete of Mitchell Creek Bridge. I'm sure some of you have noticed when the poples there. So they have a certain kind of material that they haven't used, an epoxy. And once they get the road closed, M.D.O.'s gonna be working side by side with Bado, I think it's house. I can't remember, but we've worked with that company before, they've done work on Woodward Avenue many, many years ago. So this is the detour that we have. Some of you may have noticed, but the signs have gone up notifying the residents that there's a construction project on another way. Monday, they will mobilize and get everything hosed up and on Tuesday, the actual road will be closed. Ridgeview, Bailey, Dexter, Waterman replacement. This is coming before you tonight. We were able to work with, police and manor rooms identified that the sewer main that was in the bid to be replaced is no longer in need of being replaced. So that saved us some money and it's gonna go before you, Mark will talk further about that. And then, last but not least, this is our Hemlock Park playscape, splash pad and warning station project. Still waiting on the DNR to give us approvals to move forward with putting the bids out. So unfortunately, this would be the time that we were hoping to be under construction, but that hasn't happened. Probably gonna get delayed until the fall. We've decided to, per the city manager's instructions, to pull out of the bid spec, the paving of Hemlock Street and the parking lots. And we're gonna have that be a separate project, so it's not gonna be held up any longer. And that's all.
You're gonna pave that this year, yes?
That's all.
They would have up until November fifteenth to get the work done. Bids, I know they're working on the bid specs today, so probably be advertised and opened up here in a couple of weeks. And hopefully, Reese Riley and others are interested and can fit it into their schedule, maybe the big hangup. I know they're interested, it's just whether or not they can fit it into the schedule.
You held off because you thought the heavy equipment would be in there doing splash pad, but it doesn't work?
Well, in a perfect world, we wouldn't pave the road until the construction was done, but I just don't foresee the ability to wait any longer. We'd risk having it gravel and mud for the whole winter, spring, when it rains really hard. Having it gravel, you can't contour the road to get the water to go exactly where you want it to go, so it ends up in other places, people's basements, people's yards, washing out things. So now, there's a, there's a big bump to prevent that and then, you know, we've heard about some damage to vehicles and things. So it's just, it's time to get it, to get it done.
What approval are we waiting for?
DNR has to sign up on the bid documents. And basically signing up on the whole project, which just doesn't go fast.
And it's not Eagle, Eagle's been okay?
Yeah, Eagle signed off, yeah. Slow.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Heather. Public comment, not related items on the agenda? Please.
Um, the corner.
Introduce yourself, please.
Huh?
Name and address.
Oh, I'm Monica Falosik, I live at two O Lake Maple Street. The two corners of. Yes. Um, the corners of Maple and Michigan, even though the lights go on for us to walk, people are not stopping for us. And a couple of weeks ago, I was on May, I was on Michigan where the water fountain is there. And I went across, this cop, this truck comes from Maple around the corner, I had to back up, even though I had to right away. People are not stopping on those corners for us. And that's not the only time, there's a, the one time we did get across, I was this far from getting hit.
Were most of right turn on reds?
Yeah.
The right turn on red issue?
The, yeah. The one that's on Maple, going from the bank to Edward Jones, that one? That light does not stay long enough to you to cross. It's like you get maybe, maybe you might get halfway and it turns right away. It doesn't stay light long enough. And people are just too much in a hurry.
Mark, is that an M.D.O. light?
It is, yes, Mayor, every light in town is an M.D.O. light and that one certainly is included in that. So the timing would be regulated by them. I can pass on to our police department and maybe we can have some enforcement.
One of the thoughts would be put no right turn on red on every one of those four corners. Night help, be safer, I don't know. Comment, anyone?
It can't be a right turn on red or you wouldn't have a walk signal.
Oh, yeah.
It has to be a green light to have a walk signal. So the right turn on red is the issue, is people not paying attention to somebody walking. And I've seen it happen too, I know it's a problem, but.
Well, you'd have a, I don't know, I always hesitate to get into those sort of weeds. You may be right, but I'm not quite sure on that. But I'll, I'll get with Commissioner Chief Haynes. To me, it may be just an enforcement thing, maybe we need to be down there more. Maybe, you know, somebody's innocuously sitting on bench or something, then how do you get them pulled over?
They'd have winter on those corners.
Yeah, yeah.
I can say Monica, Monica's not the only one of our husbands that have had this issue. Pleasantly surprised running here tonight.
Other comments on related agenda items, anyone? Hearing none? Hi, Booth.
Um, nine, eleven oh nine on the agenda?
Yes, that'll be a big item, let me assume that's gonna be a full discussion. It'll be just a little later, coming up.
I'm Ruth York and I live at two one seven Sanborn, Big Rapids. And did you want my phone number?
No.
Okay, the ask where the. And I own the property that's, I, I, next to eleven oh seven Hallbrook. And the pictures I have given you are pictures of the storm sewers. We have a storm sewer at the entrance of the apartment. And then, we have a storm sewer at the back of the storm sewer. And those pictures were taken, I'm sorry, they were in, we were in the car, we had a kind of a heavy rain shower for a few minutes. Less than, I would say less than a half hour, maybe even less than fifteen minutes. And that is the storm sewer wire from the street and from my property. And so, the storm sewer system is not adequate for any additional. I'm dealing, we have a couple of heavy duty pumps that we have to pump sometimes when the water gets too deep to pump it into the back of the property. And to have another complex next to us would be a little too much. Then, I would assume by the time you take out for paving and things, you have less ground for it to be absorbed. So I am objecting on that.
We'll discuss that issue together when we get to that agenda item.
And thank you so much.
Thank you. Alrighty. We're gonna address that further down in the agenda extensively, I'm sure. There are no public hearings, Big Rapids Housing Pilot again, Linda. We did this last year, I think.
Yes, so the city's pilot ordinance says that construction has to start within one year and one year was July fifth. So, when you get into this kind of funding, you get all these lawyers in a room and they actually go to your website and they say, your one year is up according to the city's ordinance, so could you please have them pass that resolution again?
Are you going to start that project this year?
We hope we have a tentative closing date of August ninth. We made that decision last week.
Good.
So definitely next month, I would say, but don't hold me to August ninth.
We have questions for Linda? Is there a motion for renewing that resolution granting zero payments and lieu of tax?
So moved, support.
Motion's support, questions, anyone? Hearing none, if you could follow up question, Karen?
Cochran?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. There you go, Linda.
Appreciate it.
Quarter to seven, Linda.
Yeah, no, I think I can make it ever, maybe five feet.
This resolution authorizing the agreement between City of Big Rapids and Ferris State. I had no clue what a peg was. And so, somebody might wanna hear what a peg is.
Public education government channel.
Right, but we have a channel, but Ferris doesn't have a channel, so they use our channel.
Correct.
What if they have a channel?
Ferris doesn't have a channel, we had a charter, gave it to us as part of the city's agreement, franchise agreement charter. And the city hasn't used it, they've let Ferris use it since its conception. Ferris wants to upgrade it to make it available in HD. And so, the city had negotiated a charter to do that or has done that. But there's costs associated with that, both upfront and ongoing and monthly maintenance fees. So both Ferris and the city negotiated this agreement with, between themselves to allow for the upgrade and then we'll have Ferris pay for all the upgraded costs ongoing for the next five years.
In that agreement, does it say that the city can't utilize that channel? Only with the permission of Ferris, or how does that go?
It would be Ferris, it would be have, have full author, exclusive authorization as to what to program on the channel.
They do?
They do, correct, we are giving them that right in the agreement.
Mark, did you wanna put a show on or anything on that channel?
Mayor, on that note, no, no shows for me, other than, they have frequently asked us if there was ever any content that we didn't want, that they would be open to fitting that into their other programming. So that's been my conversations with them in the past, if we wanted to have a commission meeting or something. I think they would be open to that, but they operate it.
Karen, do you know who that, who runs this channel?
Not, not for certain, I don't.
They don't do, through their TV program?
I believe it would be through the TV, television and digital media program, but I don't know that for certain, yeah, who that would be.
Do I hear a motion for that agreement change?
So moved.
Support.
Motion's support, questions?
The other thing along with that is there is a conflict waiver between Micah Myers and the university because we do some representation for the board of trustees, so both the university's general counsel and myself came up with that language and approved it, so.
Is that later in the agenda or do we do both at once?
I think it's both at once, I think it's part of the resolution.
So the resolution will be for the peg and the conflict of interest resolution? Questions, Karen? Is there a motion?
So moved, support.
But we didn't have the resolution of the conflict.
There's a resolution for the waiver of conflict of interest?
Yeah, we better.
Do those separately.
Yeah, let's do it separately. For the first one, the agreement on the peg, Karen?
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Now, do we hear a motion for the resolution acknowledging the conflict of interest between Micah Myers, two attorneys?
So moved.
Support.
Motion's support, questions?
Who was, who was that?
Uh, Epley.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Next is a longer weighted resolution to apply to the state of Michigan to have a downtown district as a social district.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mayor, we had a work session on this topic some months ago and staff was tasked with going out and conducting a survey of the downtown business owners to see if that's something they were interested in and what we got was a resounding yes. Josh was able to do that. And so, this is bringing it back to you for authorizing staff then to file the actual application with the state. And the district would be the same as our DDA district, so Pine Street on the north, Linden on the south and Warren on the east and State Street on the west. We also have a letter that's at your table, wasn't in your, in the packet, a letter of support from Macosta County Development Corporation who's advocating for this as well. And so, that's what we have for you tonight, is a recommendation to authorize staff to file the application with the state for a social district.
Questions from anyone?
Is there anyone from the DVA here? To speak in favor of the district?
But Josh. DDA or DBA, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, DBA.
DBA?
I've got two agreements in my.
I'm here to have the board and the members that I've spoken to that are in resounding favor of doing this.
Okay.
The only thing I had heard, I'm sorry, the only thing I had heard is there are some folks who aren't in favor of alcohol in the streets. That's the only negative that I had.
I, I just have one question, so what is the potential exit strategy if we as a community determine that this isn't the best fit for us? If somebody, something bad happens, is there an exit strategy? Like, are we able to quit the social district?
Oh, I'm sure we can dissolve the district, yeah.
And there's a process for that.
Dissolve in the same way that it's created.
Okay. Another question I have is, would these containers of alcohol? So it would be fully from noon until seven, Monday, Sunday through Monday, or Sunday through Saturday?
Yeah, in discussions, it was, let's not limit it to specific days, let's limit the times. And businesses themselves will essentially limit that based on when they're open and available. Because you have to purchase it from a business, it's not a social district in which you bring your own alcohol into it, it has to be purchased at a participating business, so.
So the downtown community is actually going to be within the parameters of noon and ten PM?
Yes.
And their own business hours regulating that also?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh, are there any criteria from the state other than we have determined that we desire to have this and we are requesting the licensing? Any particular criteria we have to meet or?
Just what was presented at the last meeting that Brad was able to point out for us is what is specifically allowed and what is not allowed for. Like, you can't carry the alcohol into a business, it has to remain outside. And that those businesses that are going to participate still have to pay a fee as well to get licensed to sell that alcohol within that district.
So, is Steve Gove or Josh Piles or who's going to educate every business in the district? Somebody has to teach them what it's all about.
It's gonna take collaborative effort.
Yeah, it's gonna take quite a lot of words to, we can't all of a sudden have it and then be wondering.
Or it's gonna take public safety's help as well, getting the word out to everybody, because there's going to be signs marking the footprint of where it is allowed and where it's not. So it's gonna take a number of people's involvement in getting it spread, so that everyone understands.
And the soonest, how long will it take, Mark?
I think the application wait period is months, if I remember right.
That's the way we understood it, it's not something that we're looking at probably happening this year. Like, we'll apply, but through the process, it might be something that doesn't actually take effect till after the new year.
I'm sure Ferris Homecoming would love to have it in place.
I think part of that application process too is that they'll wanna see a plan, a detailed plan of how it ends and work on the rules. That's probably part of the process the state will wanna look at.
So, Mark, who will do that?
Well, I think Josh and I.
You're gonna have to create some kind of education system and a booklet and all kinds of things.
I mean, essentially, the rules are the rules of the district, right? You have to have a clear cup with the signature of the business on it, I mean, those are gonna be, I don't know that we're gonna draft a bunch of new rules. I mean, we would basically say we'd comply with the regulations of the district.
Somebody's gonna provide.
Yeah, we'll get that done, yeah.
A concise packet that they'd be able to reference, is that, yeah.
Okay, yes, please?
Janne Ferrier, who carries the liability insurance on that, that if something should happen?
Well, it would be the businesses themselves, I think, 'cause they've got, they're again issuing their own cups and they're selling the alcohol from their own establishments.
Will their insurance cover that, when most people are out walking up and down the street? That's what Jack Cross.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, because you could go to Schubert's and get a drink and then you could go to Blue Cow and get a drink and then you could go to the Raven and get a drink and then all of a sudden, something happens, who's gonna fall under that liability insurance?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, I'm sure that's part of the state's application process is to be sure that that's covered. I'm not sure off the top of my head who's gonna cover that. But I think the idea is since the businesses are themselves participating voluntarily and issuing the cups, they have to agree to as part of that process or that plan to have their, the liability be covering, you know, what they do or what they sell.
Just another big issue a little bit, I'm sure they have it, Reed City has a big district, so they must have that same answer in many districts. Alright.
I just have one more question. So I know you've researched other communities with the social district, how does our timeframe line up with theirs? Is it comparable, like when they've established their social district period for when we're proposing to have ours?
I would say that it is, I, I, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the time, you're talking about time.
Time of day, like, are they like doing evenings only or Saturdays and Fridays?
Yes, it's comparable.
To me, that's a very relevant question because if you don't want children to be involved with the drinking of alcohol on the city street, but later you make the district, the less that would happen, is that kinda what you're getting at?
But just for clarity and who we're comparing ourselves to and how it's been established in those communities to see their successes or their failures. You know, if we're looking at our closest neighbors and they've never had an issue and they have the exact same parameters, that kinda gives me a little bit more confidence that this will be successful for us too.
Very good. Is there a motion for establishing a Big Rapids downtown district as a social district?
So moved.
Support.
Motion's support, questions? Hearing none, Karen?
Simmons?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Next, Heather had talked to us about Bailey Dexter Ridgeview. And there was a slight change in that one, removing the sewer line. And we're ready to go there, your builder is McGurk?
Yep, we worked with them before, they were on IZ Avenue.
Not pleasant. Is there a motion for that project?
So moved.
Support.
Motion's support, questions?
I do have one, we've worked with McGurk in the past, recent past?
They, they were the contractors when we did IZ Avenue.
Okay.
Other questions? And they plan to start this year?
Yes.
And what's the finish time? That's gonna be a huge project.
We have parameters on our grant application, our grant funds are supposed to be spent by the end of September, if I remember right. And it's gonna be pushing it, but the idea is they get it done this year.
Yeah, it would be this year, so I presume it would be a later deadline than the November fifteenth.
Yeah, I think they have a final date in November, but that's like hustle, it's when they close the asphalt plant down. Yeah, it's gonna happen, but they know, I mean, that's in their bid, is to have it done by then, so.
Is there a motion?
So moved, support.
Motion's support, for the Bailey Dexter Ridgeview, the pavement sure needs. Motion for support for the Bailey Dexter Ridge View. The pavement sure needs doing, ooh, moly, it's treacherous over there.
Yeah.
Question, please?
Cochran?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Next is Mr. Rennie's motion. We have a resolution to use Gleason Van De Brink as our certified wastewater operator.
Yeah, I'll jump in here, Mayor. So many don't know or realize that Gleason Van De Brink actually has a whole operations wing of their business, and they, communities hire them to just run their plants sometimes. And so we've drawn off their expertise time and time again over our tenure with them. We have a plant, a wastewater plant, that's a B license plant, so that it's operated under the license of somebody with a B license. And Jake has his C license and is pursuing B. Now, this is not new to us. I believe when Dave took the job, was it the same set of circumstances? I believe he took the wastewater superintendent job with a C license, then was able to get his B. But in that meantime period, we need their license, we need their expertise to mentor Jake. And, and so this contract represents the time spent doing that. We have set it up in which the police would have somebody on site to help out, not every day, but a lot of days through the summer. And then after that would be more of a remote access, but they would look at our monthly reporting, make sure that, that they're comfortable signing off on it, because it's actually operated under their license until we're able to get that. So that's what we have.
Is there a limit on how soon a C becomes a B? I mean, did you say it could be infinite, or kind of a contract length?
Yeah, we have, well, we have sort of precedence on that issue. It comes from our union contract, and then you have two years to get your license. If you haven't, that's usually two tests, Jake, or three? It could be three, maybe. I mean, they, they test a couple times a year.
Yes, depending on experience, how often you can test.
And so Jake has a lot of experience, he's a smart guy, he's done good on tests, and I know we'll get this. It's just a matter of, he has to meet all the qualifications, which some are like higher ed type things for a B license, some are supervisory experience, maybe. Jake, maybe you talk about what you have to go through to test.
Yeah, so there's, there's some classes I have to take to get the college equivalent courses. So I have enough credits to qualify to take the test, and then it also requires, so I say, years of experience supervising a wastewater plant. So it's kinda...
So it's a form.
Supervisory role, not necessarily supervising, but.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Questions? A resolution to use Gleason Van De Brink to be the certified wastewater operator. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Questions further?
I have one.
Yes.
Mark, how are you planning to fund this?
Other wastewater fund, yeah.
Because it obviously wasn't budgeted.
Well, yeah, but we've been down operators for a year, or two. I mean, there's certainly funding, there's certainly money there, yeah. And we're going through the hiring process right now for wastewater operators, number one, to replace Jake's position, and then we've had a vacant one for...
A while.
A long time, so, yeah.
That was my only question, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and support. Call a question, please.
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Next is a resolution offering the fifth year with our auditing firm, Mark?
Yes, we've had Braithewald and Heffner, I think I say it right. You remember Peter, who comes to our meetings, is, we've worked with them off and on over the years. They're currently our auditors of record, and this would be the last year in which they could perform those services. The city charter, I think, dictates that every five or six years you have to rotate, so this would be the last time. And we would go out to bid, and Braithewald and Heffner would not be able to be bidders. So we're comfortable with their work, they're very professional, and think that one more year is prudent for our auditors.
Good by you, Carla?
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to extend the auditing firm services?
So moved.
Support.
Motion for questions. Karen?
Johnson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Next is a resolution appointing a member to the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission.
Our grant coordinator, of which now that's Melanie, who you met earlier, our grant person has always, has traditionally been a member of the SENS Committee for the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission. And so this is a way to access, you know, federal dollars frankly is routed through the Regional Planning Commission and gives us an access to point to that. Melanie's great, she's gonna do a wonderful job, and we're looking to appoint her again, her as well, I should say, I guess.
Questions? Is there a motion for that appointment?
So moved. Support.
Motion for support. Karen?
Simmons?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
These are sure rousing items, Mark. Next is a resolution to appoint people to the Board of Trustees of the MML Compensation Fund, Mark.
We do this, it seems like annually, I know, Michigan Municipal League has a workers' comp fund, in which they have elections, and the only group that can vote are the members through the city commissions. And so you have a ballot in front of you, of three people who've been on there before, and I think three new potential members, and then they can, you could also write in others if you wish, but I know a number of these people, and have no reason to think any of them wouldn't do a great job on the workers' compensation fund, so.
Have you always used MML for your comp fund?
As long as I know of.
Okay, so a long, long time, yeah. Questions?
I have one. I didn't see an actual ballot, so I don't know.
I haven't, I haven't.
So how many positions are open right now?
I mean, what difference?
How many positions are open right now?
As many people as...
Yep, they just...
So it's, it's kind of a...
It's a slate of six.
Okay.
One for all and all for one. Thank you.
Yeah, all of them. Here's the ballot, here, all of them.
Gotcha.
Is there a motion for those folks to be on that board?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Questions? Karen?
Cochran?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Next is an ordinance question. There was an ordinance to rezone 1107 Colburn, I think I call it Chipotle Road, from R1 to R3. Planning Commission met, heard information from the developer, and voted six all against the rezone. It has been brought here to the city commission by staff to approve the change as their recommendation. So it's in the hands of the city commission as to what to do with the rezoning of 1107 Colburn Avenue. And I assume there are some people who might want to discuss this a little bit. Anyone?
My name's Dave Kaufman. I own the property at 221 South DeCraff, so it's kitty corner from that property. And, and obviously, I'm not looking forward to having a low-income apartment complex, thirty units possibly on the acre and a half on that location, for sure. Because as I see it, no matter what, any entrance or exit would be onto DeCraff, because I can't see them doing it to the Colburn. Anyways, I'm not, I wouldn't be in favor of it at all.
Thank you. Others?
I also reside at, or own at 221 South DeCraff. We already have so much traffic from the industrial businesses down the street. So this would just create more traffic for us, plus it's gonna be three stories high. Everything around there is ranches, so why would you make three stories high? We won't even see the road. To me, it's just crazy. So, plus that soil supposedly has been contaminated from an oil spill, I don't know, three-plus years ago. So that was also mentioned at the meeting. So I don't know who wants to test that soil on top of building on it, so that's up to you guys.
Thank you. Did you catch your name, Karen?
I couldn't catch it.
She, Karen needs your name for the minutes, please.
Oh, T. M. Hoffman?
Hoffman?
Yes. Okay, and you have come in.
Please, John.
Janet Ferrier, I guess my only remark would be if the plan board denied it, why are you trying to overturn something that the plan board has recommended to you? You've appointed these people to the plan board, and they've given you their opinion. It's like they're not trusting their job to do.
That's bad. Very much discussed. Michelle? Well, Michelle will have to address that, because we've all asked the same question. Michelle?
Staff is recommending approval, even though the plan commission recommended denial. The reason staff feels that way is there's R3 zoning directly across from the trail from the property, and that Chipotle Lake, or Colburn, or Sixteen Mile, whatever you like to call it, is a very busy road, and it is unlikely that someone is going to build a single-family home on such a busy road. So you already have some R3 district across the street, or across the trail from it. You have some commercial, kinda kitty corner from it, across Colburn Avenue. You have some industrial zone property behind it, so you have a mix of uses surrounding that property. And sometimes R3 zoning or apartment complexes work as a good buffer between single-family homes and some of the more intense uses that are in cities.
Did you catch all that? Did you hear in the back?
We heard it.
Heard it, but I don't like it.
Just wanted to make sure you heard it.
Yeah, it's kinda hard to hear back here, but...
Mark?
The, well, the, the real technical answer to, to Ms. Ferrier's question is, the planning commission doesn't make a decision. They make a recommendation on rezonings. The city commission makes a decision. So it's not that anybody's trying to overturn it, that's just, it's now their decision, and they're getting a recommendation from the planning commission not to do it. One from staff to do it, one from planning commission. Now, this group has to decide what they're gonna do. But they are not overriding necessarily, they're just, they're the ones who make the decisions on rezonings, not the planning commission. They make a recommendation. That's all.
Yeah, I, I, one more thing. I mean, obviously, I don't know how familiar you guys are with that little corner, whatever.
Know it well.
There, there's a gas pipeline in the front on Colburn Road right now. So you guys talk like it's on Corbin Road, but the, any traffic is not gonna be on Colburn.
It's gonna be on DeCraff, which is now homes, right?
There are some duplexes on that street, but again, they're all low-level or two-story houses, but, but anything that somebody considers building there, especially a multi-unit apartment complex, is gonna dump to DeCraff, not Colburn. So it just doesn't even make any sense at all. We all talk like, like other residents around there, it may make sense, may more to us, to have somebody build some duplexes or something there, but not a, not a multi-three-story-high apartment complex. Thank you.
Michelle, is that ground contaminated? Is that a stat? Do we know anything about that ground?
We don't have any, there hasn't been any soil sampling, to my knowledge, on that property, on if it would be considered a brownfield or not.
Okay.
So that would be part of any development phase, especially if they're going with grant money, that they would have to go through that testing.
Others?
Is the owner the applicant, or is this... I guess that's my first question. Is the owner of the property the applicant?
Yes.
For the rezoning?
The applicant does own the property.
The deed has been recorded, which is the...
With the company.
Oh, okay.
And then, refresh my memory, I think I know the answer to this. But once we rezone, we really don't have a say over what type of housing is put there. We could rezone, thinking that this, these were going to be townhouses or duplexes, what if it's rezoned, and the owner puts up a multi-apartment complex, that's their purview?
Once the property is rezoned, then that zoning district stands, and everything that's permitted in it would stand as well.
Now, in the presentation they gave us, I only see townhouse-style apartments. I don't see anything shown that would be like a, a three-story-high complex or anything like that in our packet.
Yeah, at the planning commission meeting, the applicant didn't really commit to whether it was gonna be a two-story or a three-story development. So I can't really...
Or townhouses, or high apartments.
Or townhouses or anything.
Yeah.
Nothing was committed to.
Nothing was committed to.
So the planning commission, I read through their notes, a lot of those commissioners, they probably saw this as spot zoning. Do you, do you see it that way? Do you have a differing opinion?
I don't see it as spot zoning, because there's R3 right next door across the trail. And I think the planning commission saw that trail as like a divi, a division, how some people see streets as division and zoning, but to me, it's not a spot zone, because it's, it's adjacent to R3 zoning.
This is yours?
Yes. There's two issues here. Is it, there's the issue of rezoning the property, and there's the issue of, of a site plan. And not necessarily would you approve of the site plan.
Right.
Right.
And that was my understanding, between Mr. Silvers and Mr. Sahaki, who was director, was director of the Housing Commission, that any pilot program that would go to at least the executive director, I'm not sure it would go to the whole commission, but it would definitely go to the director before another pilot program would be approved by the city.
We've heard nothing about that, Mark.
I, I haven't had any conversations.
In the low-income housing.
Right.
Right.
He mentioned it in passing.
Yeah.
Something about that, right?
He mentioned many things in passing, and that was one of them.
Yeah.
He mentioned that, okay.
My, my question for Michelle this morning, and for Brad, was can you tie rezoning to what's being built there? And I wasn't sure what the final answer was, but to me, that's the key. I mean, if they're gonna put in six townhomes that are nice on that big piece of land, you have to rezone it to do that, but that's not the way it goes. Is that correct, or can it go that way?
Correct. I mean, Michelle's answer was correct, that once you rezone the property, anything that's permitted by right in that zone can be built there. Now that said, in some situations, I've seen it done where a developer will come with a fully thought-out site plan of what it's going to be, and then ask for a site plan approval and zone rezoning at the same time. The problem with that for the developer is it's a risk for them, because if they don't get the rezoning, they've spent all the money...
Developing.
Developing that site plan, and then it's not...
But it's legal.
It's legal, yes.
I also looked at the master plan, and I did not see that the master plan called for any zoning changes in that area. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That was one of the issues that the commissioners, the planning commissioners raised when they recommended it.
You know, having been on the planning commission, I, I was in their position several times. And I know that I did my due diligence, and then to have it come to the actual city commission and have a different decision being made was always hard as a, as a, as a planning commissioner.
It does happen. It does happen, however.
But it does happen, and there's reasons that happens, so, and it's not that.
One last try, sir, this is your third.
I just wanted to make, I mean, I know my neighbor at Demme has lived there for, I don't know, thirty years. I know he was adamant about, I guess they did a lot to go through to get that all zoned R1 back in the day, I don't know, I wasn't there. But, you know, like I said, all I know is that, you know, I, when I came, we just, we got that like a week before the, the commission was here, and that we, somebody was wanting to rezone that, so, you know, even when we came to that, you expect to see, well, what is their site plan gonna be? You know, you don't even know. And everything that I seen was somebody threw some stuff out of the internet, a view of row homes submitted and said, we wanna make this R3. I, in my mind, it's all ridiculous.
Show the people that, that's the board.
Okay, other new ideas, comments?
I have another follow-up mayor from Michelle. So could this be a variance if the property owner and developer were to come to us and ask for a zoning variance? With, and I'm not, just very witty as I talk through this, um, where they would have more of a full site plan, and we would do, again, something, well, that's more like spot zoning, isn't it?
No, that's a very, it's a perfect plan, you can variance it to R3.
You know, but I guess, I guess what I'm saying out loud is it's not the way, it's not the way we should be zoning things.
So you, you can do that, there are.
You can.
There are places that do that, um, use, use variances as a way to maneuver your way around your master plan and zoning ordinance, but it's not something I would recommend.
And the problem with it is that there are set standards that are quite stringent in the zoning ordinance to grant a variance.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
And the, it would be very hard pressed for someone to say, for example, it wasn't self-created, to buy a piece of property they planned to develop, uh, it didn't create a hardship for them in buying that property, so it'd be very difficult to, with a straight face, granting it as a variance.
Over the big picture is we want good quality housing in Big Rapids that doesn't offend the neighborhood. Isn't that always, should be our goal, no matter what the stuff is.
That's, that's why I call the public input, I'm going to be soliciting over the next year, I understand from our consultants, why that is so important. Because we could have changes coming upon us, and we want to approach it logically and sensibly and collectively. The, the thing I, you know, I am, I really struggled with this because on the one hand, um, one of the reasons we're pursuing the redevelopment-ready communities is to repurpose unused properties or properties within the city limits for our purpose. But I had a number of, of questions about this particular project, and I'm thinking, you know, they're proposing thirty, a minimum of thirty units, half one-bedroom, half two-bedroom, and let's just say for sake of argument, that maximum capacity of that, you've got, that's forty-five cars, one per bedroom, where's the parking lot? I walked that property yesterday, I'm like, where's the parking lot going to go? And to Mr. Kaufman's point, I can't see a curb cut coming onto Colburn. So the likelihood is that the traffic is gonna go in and out of DeCraft. And while I appreciate that there are people, you know, who might live there who will be using the trail, I'm not sure they're going to really be using it to get to.
To work in back.
To work in back, especially in the wintertime, they are going to have cars. So, but I appreciate, you know, that we're not really being asked to approve the project. We're asked, being asked to rezone the property. And my, much as I, you know, I understand the need for, for us to repurpose properties, I am concerned that it does not, like, meet the current master plan and land for future land use as it is stated right now. So I'm gonna err on the side of, um, going with, uh, you know, supporting the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
There's actually no reason that that couldn't be three very beautiful R1 lots and build homes on them. Nobody would probably complain, and they would be very nice lots. All right, let's have a motion. We're gonna make a motion to a, the motion is to approve, uh, rezoning from R1 to R3 on Colburn Avenue, so.
Stated in the affirmative.
Stated in affirmative, and you'll vote as you wish, and you say yes, it moves to R3.
And we can also, uh, to just not move on it, correct?
Yes.
You can always, uh, not vote. Is there a motion? Hearing none, it sits. Next, so it stays R1. We did not. That's what Amanda was. Ordinance adopting new sanitation rates, raise them again, Mark, let's have it.
We have a newer, uh, contract with Republic, and, uh, that we've already approved and signed, and so this would bring the rates into line to support that contract that has been approved. Percentage, Carla?
From our previous contract to the contract that's gonna take effect, when you get built in August, it'll be billed for July, um, it's about an increase of six point seven five percent, so your bill's going from twenty-three seventy-four to twenty-five thirty-three for one unit.
In that state, is there an inflation clause year to year?
Yeah, we have, there's future years, there are two, yep, it's four and a half, four and a half per year following this one.
Questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, please.
I would say next time we do a rate increase, we should give the public more notice than one month behind when we're making ordinances or rate changes. I would also recommend that we include this information in their monthly bills, at least a month in advance of increasing their rates. We're under a lot of scrutiny from the public, and any information that we can provide them in advance is to the benefit of everyone.
Steve's gonna, he's already put his first newsletter in the water.
I got it, yeah, I got it.
Very good.
Very excited to get that in the bill. And I'm like, Dad, I told you this was gonna happen, no, but it's.
It's here.
It's here.
Questions, anyone? Is there a motion on the ordinance adopting new sanitation rates?
So moved.
Support.
Motion support, questions? Karen?
Epley?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Is there unscheduled business, commission concerns, or reports?
I have something there.
Please.
Uh, on your tables, you have the little tool we developed a long time ago for a conversation with Dr. Pink. We now have that meeting scheduled, I believe, August.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So obviously, that's coming up, we don't have very many meetings before then. I wanted to ask the commission, um, in lieu of a work session for the strategic plan, which I, I believe on next week's meeting agenda, um, how would you guys feel about switching to a towndown discussion? Because I, I don't think we're, we're prepared to do the strategic plan discussion. Was that?
You coming?
I'm okay with that.
Tell Mark, he's the one who's in charge of the, the agenda.
The agenda.
It's in the City Commission.
Well, I don't like to make changes without getting the feedback from my fellow commissioners.
I think it's a good idea. Is there anything else you wanted to pack it?
I don't believe so.
Just this?
Yeah, I think that this is just fine, this is where we landed last time. And then a reminder to my fellow commissioners that you, any information you have on the strategic planning work session, if you could send that to Tammy and I, and we'd like that, so that we can get it on the docket for work session in August.
Did everybody see what Melissa signed out to on the strategic planning?
Yes, I have that. So if you have anything to add to that, please send it. That is all I have there.
Mark, I let it slip, before Ruth York left, I was gonna ask her, she had started talking about this flooding issue. Is this something you know all about anyway, Heather? What's, what's up there?
It's, uh.
Storms are not big enough, or is it?
Not on our end.
Oh, it's in their parking lots and such?
Yes.
It's been an ongoing thing for.
Years.
A long time, yeah, they need to do some upgrades in their property. And there is, never, you were never gonna, it's their housing complex.
Okay.
Yeah, they would, they would never, I mean, you can't build a storm sewer big enough that isn't gonna flood at some point, right? I mean, you see a picture of the road, I mean, we have that on North and South State Street, I mean, sometimes you get rain events that don't fit in. So, I mean, yeah, has it been overwhelmed on Sixteen Mile Road? Yeah, but that's not a, necessarily a perpetual problem, the flooding on their property is a perpetual problem.
It is. Anyone other business for, yes, please?
Yep, I've got, um, actually, we have a meeting set for the Compensation Commission again, to discuss, um, the details of the per deum as far as what, um, meetings are going to be allowed, what maybe meetings aren't going to be allowed. And that is going to be on Monday, the seventeenth, at ten thirty, you know, here at City Hall. So they're gonna convene again, just to clarify.
I just wanna broaden up with Mark, that it should be spelled right out, so there's no question that whoever looks at the sheet, well, that doesn't qualify, gone. And, and, and so nobody is making that decision except the, the commission, and what, what is and isn't approved for that. That's where that came from.
I hope that we should get some clarification, cause I know the logs need to be in by the end of July, so. Wait after that meeting, hopefully I can get some clarification and get a, maybe a draft guidelines out.
A list of those that are qualified and those that aren't.
Yep.
Does that need to come back to us?
I don't think so. They do, I don't think we're, we don't change what they say.
No, I just, I know. Yeah.
Long as there's good with it, then it will be done.
It's, it's for clarity, with those logs, we would approach you, Cami, or Heather?
Melissa?
Melissa.
Who will get the logs?
It's good to be, actually, the logs are gonna go to the Treasurer's Office, would be Karla.
Okay, so we would approach Carla to gain a log?
They're probably gonna filter through me, we're gonna go through the, the guidelines, and then they'll be submitted to Treasurer's Office for payment.
So bring them to you or to Carla? To you? Okay.
But, once the determination on what qualifies happens, each commissioner will be, email the copy, so we have one to complete if we need to. So that was my. The log.
Oh, yeah, the log, you will get the log along with the, um, draft policy.
Okay.
Questions, other work, business, where the business is true?
How's bigger apples township doing these days?
Lot the same.
Very good.
It's still there, huh?
Well, it's still there.
Has it moved?
I'm still hanging in there.
Very good. Anybody else? Where to turn?